And we will all rise and at your discretion state the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So now we'll move into roll call, conflict of interest check. Karen Nolte is absent tonight with permission. Lonnie?
Here.
Maris?
Here.
Michelle?
Present.
Gretchen?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
And myself here. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda tonight? No, great. So approval of the agenda. Any questions with the agenda? And my usual reminder that it's fine to move anything off the consent calendar if you want.
I do have a slight edit to the minutes. I don't know if we need to move it off there if you want me to just make the motion with that edit since it's on the consent agenda.
Let's move it off the consent agenda. So let's add discussion of the minutes as 7A. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Or to the agenda as a whole? Okay, then can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
So moved by Metz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Driscoll. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So hearing none, then we'll move forward. Going to start with the first call for public comment on agenda items. And a reminder, we like to get comments on the agenda items at the start of the agenda. And then anything else that doesn't relate to the agenda is at the end. And the reason for that is so that public comment can actually influence our discussion. And state your name and address for the records and limit your comments to three minutes, please. So any members of the public who wish to speak? Come on up.
Sir, would you find the button on the microphone? There's a button there. Push it till it turns green. There we go, it's on.
Yes ma'am, it's on, yep. Awesome. Okay, so I would like to just quickly address the board. My name is Kevin Warner. I am a resident here in Dexter Township and have lived in the township for 22 years. My parents have lived here for roughly 35 years. We have 100 acres that we both take care of, so I have a big commitment to the township and to this community. As members on the board will probably recall, I was one of the two candidates formerly for the Township Zoning Ordinance Officer. I did not obtain that position, however, it's my understanding that the party that did retain that position has since resigned. Personally, I think that's a little frustrating because we're looking at about eight or nine months since that position was filled. And I think there was a lot of resources that went into trying to train that person that are out the door. Whereas, not only do I live in this community, not only do I have a background of 35 years in law enforcement, but I'm committed to try and use my experience, my assets, you know, what I have as a person, along with my family who also resides with me, to better this community. And I am hopeful that moving forward, members of this board and/or future board will give consideration to fulfilling that position and will certainly give strong consideration to myself. Last week, my wife and I, Stephanie, did come in. We met with the Township Supervisor for about 30 minutes and had a pleasant discussion. I am aware that prior to the previous ordinance officer, that position was filled and overseen by Michael Zinnick, who also happens to be a former police officer from the city of Ann Arbor. I will tell this board that I am not Michael Zinnick. I am Kevin Warner and that I have different philosophies on how things are done from a perspective of enforcement. So, you know, I provided references who I know 100%, 100% spoke very highly of me. And I do recall that I think the member of the board at that time, I did forward you copies of my resume. If any of you have any questions about me, my background, or who I am, feel free to reach out to me. And I would also, if you choose, I will give you references that I used previously and/or more. And they have agreed for any of you to call them and inquire about me. So I just want this board to truly understand that this is something that I wanted you, that I want to pursue. I'm retired now. Retired last year, so I have lots of time.
Kevin, I'll give you a 30-second warning.
Yep, I have it right here. Thank you. So I appreciate your time. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to speak? Okay, then hearing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh wait, no, I'm sorry.
What did I?
You pulled it off, never mind. Sorry about that.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Can, so with the consent agenda, we just did that. We just did that, actually.
We moved the minutes off the consent agenda.
And then we voted on it.
And then we voted on it.
We just approved the agenda.
Oh, we approved the change.
We approved the agenda, but not the consent agenda, which are all the items. Yeah, so that means we're approving the wave agreement, the Washtenaw County Cleanup Day sponsorship, the furniture expense, and the DFD expense, all of which...
And is it too late to remove? Just because I have a question, I didn't see a cost on this on page 15 for the...
The cost is...
Lower level?
The cost is in the write-up.
Do I not have that?
Which would be on page... On page 3 of the agenda, item 60.
Oh, so I just saw the, I don't know what. That was in the location. Yep, I see that now. I must have actually looked over this because I went to page 15 and I just saw pictures. So I actually didn't have an opportunity to... I mean, can we still move it off the consent agenda so we can have a discussion? I would just like to know what's going where, especially when it has an impact on the HAB County Board location and how heavy tables are to move.
Okay. So those who moved to consent, so as a procedural matter, Sarah, what do we do if we... Can we have a discussion on a consent agenda item?
Have you already approved the consent agenda?
We approved the agenda, but we didn't approve the consent agenda. And now there's a desire for a discussion of a consent agenda item.
Yes, you can make another motion to move that item. Like even after you approved the agenda, you can make another motion to move that item off.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to move the furniture expense off of the consent agenda?
If I could, I would appreciate it. So I would like to make a motion to move the lower level remodel off of the consent agenda for further discussion.
And I would suggest that we make that an action, item 8A, because, so we can allow our lovely planners to, so we can postpone that discussion until after the planning discussion. So let's move the furniture discussion to 8A. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? As amended?
As amended.
So that's a move by Driscoll, a second by Metz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, then the consent agenda is approved. Okay, now we'll talk about the minutes. So Lonnie, what change did you want to make to the minutes?
Yeah, this is, it's very small. Page 7, under Other Issues, Comments and Concerns, at the very end. The first trustee, Scott, should actually be trustee Sanders.
And that's why it says she. Okay.
I apologize, I thought I corrected that.
Okay, any other changes to the minutes? Thank you for that careful review, Lonnie. Okay, then can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
As amended. And a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Scott, seconded by Driscoll. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. And now we're going to go into the combined discussion and action items. I put these together because I grouped all the planning. So you guys are aware that our standard agenda separates the discussion items and the action items, but we grouped these items together in particular because they're all, they all relate to planning. And we have our planning, some members of our planning team here. And I did want to kind of preface this by saying that, so Megan and Mike are going to talk to us about zoning enforcement, what our practices are, and lay out what the policy options are for zoning, for code enforcement. There's also a discussion item about short-term rentals. I am not recommending by any means that we take up any significant policy matters right now, but these are topics that are being discussed in our community right now. And because of that, I felt like you guys should just be aware of it. So this is really, to my mind, this is more of a framing for the future than it is anything that I plan to put on the board in the next few months. So our focus in the near future, in the next four months, is this renewables ordinance, which is time-limited under state statute. And it takes a long time, it takes many months to make these kinds of significant changes to our ordinance and to our policies. But I just felt that the board should be aware of what's happening. And then also, we, as you all know, since I've taken over as supervisor, we've been doing some education each month about what the core operation of the township is. And zoning and code enforcement is one of those topics that you all have not heard about in the past. And so I wanted you all to learn about what we do at the township around code enforcement. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Megan. You all have met Megan. And Megan, I'll let you introduce your colleague.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. My name is Megan Mastin Minock. I'm with Carla Wartman Associates. We are your township planning consultant. And when Karen approached me about talking more in depth with the board about code enforcement, I immediately thought of my colleague, Mike Razik. He came to our firm from Ypsilanti Township where he managed not only the building department, the planning department, but also the code enforcement department. And so brings a wealth of knowledge on those items. And also, I've relied heavily on him during the time here with code enforcement matters in terms of next steps, how to structure things and whatnot. So he, along with Grayson Moore, who assists me here at the township, were the primary authors of the memo that was in your packet, would like to do is to turn the floor over to him to hit the highlights of that packet, of that memo, and lay out some decision points for you to think about as you dive into these matters, probably in the next couple of months, and as you continue to get questions from residents also about them.
Okay, Megan, and I was not clear, and I really apologize for this, but it's actually, what comes up first is the zoning ordinance amendment, which is a pretty simple matter.
Yes.
But maybe, before you hand over the mic, could you...
I can do that, thank you. So Wonderland Marina came to the township and was looking for, to replace their sign. I'm sure all of you can visualize that sign. And it didn't meet the zoning ordinance. Actually, they were going to make the sign smaller than the one that they have. So they went to the zoning board of appeals for a variance, and the zoning board of appeals looked in and said, "You're probably not the only person who's going to face this." So what they asked is that the planning commission look at this technicality, which was basically, the zoning ordinance now, if you have 300 feet of footage, 300 feet of frontage on a street, you can have up to a 24-square-foot sign. If you don't, which Wonderland Marina didn't, and you're zoned residential, then you get a 16-square-foot sign, which is 4x4, which is not very big. So, planning commission looked at this, looked at several options, and what they came to was just to remove that provision of the 300 feet. And that for any special land use, which is typically a non-residential use in a residential zone, whether they had a special land use permit now, or whether they're a non-conforming use and have been that non-conforming use for years, and now that's a special land use in that residential zoning district, which is exactly the situation for Wonderland Marina, then you can have a 24-square-foot sign. So that's the, and they had a public hearing last month. They, one person commented, and then they made recommendations to you that are in the motion and in your packet tonight. If you read it really carefully, you'll see there were some changes to the zoning districts, and those are more typographical than anything else. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, but it's really about allowing commercial businesses existing in residential zones to have a sign that is of a size that can properly advertise their business.
Any questions about this proposed change to the zoning ordinance? Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve the section 19.06 of the Township Zoning Ordinance?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Scott, seconded by Metz. And I guess I'll do a roll call. So Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Gretchen Driscoll?
Yes.
Michelle Stamblelles?
Yes.
Maris Metz?
Yes.
Lonnie Scott?
Yes.
Myself, Karen Sigenga, yes. So approved unanimously. Okay, now zoning enforcement, code enforcement.
Well, I've already done my speech, so I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Good evening, everybody. As Megan said, my name is Mike Razik. And by way of introduction, I'm not a planner, but I used to be a cop, so please don't hold that against me. Just very briefly, I did 21 years with the Sheriff's Department here in Washtenaw County, retired as a lieutenant running Ypsilanti Township for almost a decade, and immediately went to work after pulling a pension from there at the ripe old age of 44 for Ypsilanti Township as their police administrator, which was a civilian position. And when the current supervisor was first elected supervisor in 2008, the economy crashed. There was a variety of staffing challenges in-house, and I was asked to do a lateral move and, in addition to police services, take over the administrative oversight for building, planning, and code enforcement. And so we created the Community Standards Office under the philosophy that every one of those disciplines had something to do with upholding community standards. Whether it was planning and zoning on land use and how things were to look and what could be done where, to vertical construction and how things were built and what they looked like, to the maintenance of those structures and those lands in perpetuity going forward. And then, of course, the policing aspect, which also upholds various community standards. So I did that up until three years ago, when I was able to take a pension from there and went to work for Carla Wartman, and I'm now their operations manager. And I do a lot of client work for communities like yourselves. Our code enforcement division, we are heavily involved in the building departments and the code enforcement offices. Code enforcement, general code enforcement, not zoning, but just general, is probably the least thing that we do. We do run, completely run, building departments in about five counties, do a lot of construction plan review, and of course, our planning division is very, very busy. So I was asked to help evaluate the situation with code enforcement here in Dexter Township. I'm not a resident, but I do live nearby in the next township, North Hamburg, just over the line. So I'm very familiar, because I crisscross here and I patrolled here back in the early 80s for quite a while. So I'm familiar with the township. After talking with Megan and looking at some statistical data, it was apparent that Dexter Township has historically done what I would term reactive code enforcement. That was the first thing that I noticed, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. It seems to have served Dexter Township very well, and perhaps could continue to serve it well into the future. But there are options that you should be well-informed about so that you can make well-informed decisions going forward. The other thing I noticed was, you've got a lot of property maintenance standards baked into your zoning code, and that is highly unusual. Most places separate them completely. When we talk about code enforcement, you have to know what somebody means when they ask about it. Are you talking about zoning code enforcement, which is more of an expertise for the planner's side of the business? Or are you talking about general code enforcement, which generally speaks to property maintenance issues, blight, abatement of dangerous buildings, that type of thing? They are two completely separate professions and skill sets. But here, they're kind of baked all into one, and if it's, it was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you've been operating under a model where you have a full-time zoning administrator and then a part-time code enforcement officer. And that can be a very successful model if it's done correctly. So I won't bore you by reading through this, but I'll just give you some of the highlights in my mind of what I think is important for you to consider. The reactive approach you're under now seems to have been guided by a few factors, including resource allocation. You know, where I worked for a while in Ypsie Township, there were six full-time ordinance officers that did general code enforcement and rental housing inspection services for well over 10,000 rental housing units. That is not Dexter Township. That's not what you need. So I don't know offhand what your resource allocation would look like for code enforcement, but I can tell you, some smaller jurisdictions like yourselves choose to fund it out of the general fund. And there are others, at least one in Washtenaw County, one township that I'm aware of, that I worked for, that when they, not the original police millage, but at some point during a millage renewal, the millage language was amended to include ordinance code enforcement. And it specifically laid out what that meant. And voters approved it, and so that is now baked into their police millage. And so there is a funding source for code enforcement at whatever level the township elected leadership would feel is appropriate. They don't have it allocated percentage-wise or any other way. They just allocate it according to their needs, and it's been very successful going forward. So that's an option to think about as well. And then eventually, they also baked into it Neighborhood Watch and Community Engagement Services that were directly related to public safety. So it serves them well. You have a lot of flexibility in terms of resource allocation. I've been told and I've seen that you can deploy people quickly and also handle the more complex, longer things that take a lot more investigation. Residents here can play an active role in identifying and reporting solutions, because as a reactive model, that's what you do. You react to complaints. Complaints can come from residents, they can come from business owners that may not be residents, they can come from elected officials, they can come from passersby's and others, right? I don't know, so I'll ask. Do you have a robust social media presence with the community? My guess is probably, right? You can get, you probably receive a lot of information that could be investigated as code enforcement through social media. I know a lot of communities really struggle with that, because it can go wild sometimes. But it can also be a very valuable source of information to try to fix things that are perceived to be broken or wrong. As with any strategy, there are some risks with doing things strictly reactively. The biggest one is delayed response. In other words, there could be a problem, maybe someone's aware of it, maybe a lot of people are aware of it. But unless somebody reports it, you may or may not respond and react to it. And that can be a problem, because if it exists for quite a while and it's not reported in the manner in which you would normally respond, it could fester and get worse and worse and worse, and then the solution is even harder to fix. Another risk is inconsistent enforcement. Anyone that's ever been involved in code enforcement can tell you, when somebody calls on a neighbor to complain, when the code enforcement person shows up, it's just like when the police show up. First thing is, "Why are you here and who called to rat me out?" And that's a real problem. Many places try to minimize the neighbor dispute potential that that creates by allowing anonymous complaints to be filed. Anonymous complaints, some people say, "Well, I don't give anonymous complaints much weight." But there may be circumstances where it's legitimate and it can serve a good purpose. Where I used to work, whether we knew who complained or not, we wouldn't reveal that to the subject of the complaint, because it just led to a lot of problems. But my point is, inequitable enforcement, inconsistent enforcement. I get written up for not mowing my grass. And as the code enforcement officer drove to my house, he or she probably passed a dozen other properties in the same condition, but there were no complaints, so I'm the only one. So that can be viewed as inconsistent, "Why are you picking on me?" And there's ways to counteract that so that it is equitable and fair. And then finally, public frustration. When people can become frustrated if they perceive that their complaints have not been addressed quickly or to their satisfaction, that's another issue with reactiveness. I will say that within your current framework, it appears as though health, safety, and public welfare concerns are given the highest priorities. And if you do have limited resources to allocate and you prioritize those first, you're doing the community a good service and doing it the best way that you can. But I would encourage you, regardless of what model you chose going forward, to continue to prioritize those. In terms of future strategy options, there are several to consider, and I'll just buzz through these. Contracting versus in-house. I can tell you, when it comes to general code enforcement, not necessarily the zoning style, but just general code enforcement, the blight things, the property maintenance things. I was looking at the dry erase board in the office. Most of them seem to be, that were pending, were property maintenance complaints, not zoning complaints. You can contract that out, but I'm, as a representative of a consultant, I'm here to tell you, you can do it more efficiently and cheaper in-house. That's just a fact. Not so with building, construction, and planning, because there are pass-through funding to the applicants, but for code enforcement, there is not. And you can do it more effectively and efficiently in-house. I will say that there seems to be some vague thoughts about having a clear enforcement process. In other words, when a complaint comes in, what is the process? Is there a written process from beginning to end? When you come to a fork in the road, what are the options for the code enforcement officer to take? Regardless of what you do, whether you stick with your current model or do something different, I would strongly encourage you to have a written policy and procedure with a process model. And publicize it, make sure, let it be an open document for everyone to see. Updating your code of ordinances. As I mentioned, you do not currently have a property maintenance ordinance. It would not cost you much to adopt one. I'm sure your attorney can advise you of that. Most communities adopt the International Property Maintenance Code. It's written and updated every three years by the International Code Council, which is a nonprofit organization that writes and updates virtually every building code, mechanical, electrical, plumbing code, and property maintenance code for virtually every state in the United States, including Michigan. The only difference between the building and trade codes and property maintenance is that property maintenance is not a state code. The only difference between the building and trade codes and property maintenance is that property maintenance is not a state code. I don't remember if you use Washtenaw County or the Chelsea area Construction Authority. So they enforce the state building codes. When the state says, they're currently under the 2015 Michigan Building Code still, in 2024. When that gets updated to the next version, the state will notify every local enforcement agency, including yours. Effective this date, you are to enforce this new state code. For property maintenance and also for fire codes, you have to adopt those as local ordinances. Which gives you the ability to pick and choose and to amend them and revise them customized to the unique needs of your community. So I would ask you to seriously evaluate and consider removing those property maintenance elements from your current zoning code and adopting a standalone property maintenance code. The latest one out is the 2024 IPMC, International Property Maintenance Code. It's a very good code. It applies to every piece of land and every structure. Regardless of residential, commercial, industrial, regardless of zoning district. You have the ability, when you adopt it as a local ordinance, to remove certain sections, to revise or amend certain sections and to add things in there that aren't in there that you would like to see. Municipal civil infraction process. I see that, I believe it's, you're currently under municipal civil infractions for enforcement of the zoning code, correct? Yes. That's a good thing. Some communities are still using it as a misdemeanor, which is horrible. The burden of proof, you know, a misdemeanor is essentially a criminal offense that carries jail time potential. And the burden of proof is beyond a reasonable doubt. Civil infractions and municipal civil infractions are like a traffic ticket. It's preponderance of evidence. You just have to tip that scale fifty-one percent in front of a judge or magistrate in order to find somebody responsible and get the outcome that you're looking for to cure whatever the problem is. There are a couple of ways to do it. Some places have an in-house municipal hearings bureau. Which gives your code enforcement officer and your zoning administrator the ability to write that civil infraction. And if it's just a matter of somebody paying the fine, they can come and have it heard in-house within the township by an appointed Bureau of Hearings officer and the fines are paid to the township, not to the court. Because when it goes to district court, you never see any of that money come back to you.
Are you sure about that?
Pretty sure.
I feel like I received fourteen, fourteen A District Court from Washtenaw County. For fines and forfeits.
It's a calculation, so the, so the court will take some of the fines and costs from you because they're administrative.
Sure.
Right, so you don't get all of it.
Right, but we do get.
There is some sort of calculation.
Yeah, but we do get some.
Yeah, like, like motor carrier enforcement, a lot of that goes to support the library systems. I mean, the money gets sent throughout the state system and it's mandated by the state where it goes. So maybe you do for traffic citations and things like that, but. This is a way to bring it in-house unless you don't just want someone to pay a fine. If you need action, then you, you write the ticket and turn it into the district court and ask for a hearing. Either informal with a magistrate, or if you need a court order, you can go formal hearing in front of a judge. And seek equitable relief. You're, you're not there asking for punitive damages to pay fines. You're there asking the judge to order them to fix or repair or cure whatever the problem is that's violating your, your ordinances. So you can have the in-house violations bureau for those low-level problems. And when you need action taken, you can still go to the district court and, and get it in front of a judge. So that's, those are some other things that you can think about. And then finally, the toll on community resources. The more proactive and aggressive you get with code enforcement, the more it's going to cost, obviously, right? You can come up with a very balanced approach. You can be primarily reactive, but also be more proactive. Either for certain geographic areas or for certain topics of your, at your direction. In terms of what you feel is most important for that type of proactive enforcement. And it's usually based on the feedback from the community, or at least it should be.
So I, are you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I wanted to clarify one thing that I was surprised by that I'm not, that I don't think we've explicitly stated, which is that I learned that we have complete discretion about zoning, about code enforcement, right? So we don't, we're not obligated to do any enforcement at all. Is that, that's.
To my knowledge, and your attorney could correct me, I don't think you're mandated by law to, to do anything. However, somewhere in here I, I talk about the risks of not enforcing an ordinance on your books. How do you explain that to the community and to the property owner who is upset that you're not? And how do you pick and choose what you enforce and what you pass on?
See, that's what I was going to ask you. I mean, we can be discretionary, but you know, I mean, is it worth it to look at the data? You know, the general location and areas where we're receiving the most complaints and I'm sure that I think we've discussed this and that's the lake communities.
Because they're living densely.
They're living very densely, so I understand how that is going to be a huge issue. But I mean, that might be the avenue that we can look at, I mean.
And then the other thing that we put, I think, a lot of time into our abandoned houses, which aren't necessarily in the lakes. But that, but that's then that, this health and safety issue which we prioritize. So if it's an abandoned house, we, we do that first because of, because it could be hazardous. And then, but in terms of neighbor disputes, it seems like it's mostly in the lakes districts where people are living close to each other.
And that short-term rental discussion is probably going to be a big one and that's probably going to be a big part of that too.
Yep, right. And Megan has been talking about, to me about the, our zoning ordinance for Lakelands requires a half acre lot, which means that something like eighty to ninety percent of our Lakelands homes require, are not in compliance with the zoning ordinance just as a baseline. And that's, 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 that just creates a lot of administrative complexity around planning, giving, issuing permits, code enforcement and all of that. When you have, when you set up a district, a zoning district where you know right off the back, almost everybody is, is, is not, is non-compliant. It, it creates a complicated situation.
Absolutely. A lot of these issues are going to require a little bit deeper dive and get down into the weeds, pardon my pun. Regarding where are the majority of the code enforcement issues? What are the issues that are going to result in long-term degradation of property values for the neighbors? All those things have to be measured and then you can make informed, valid decisions on what's, you know, best suited for Dexter Township. Based on the resources that you have available to, to go after it. Just like reactive, proactive enforcement has pros and cons. I'll just briefly touch on them. The biggest pro is the prevention of violations before they're ever reported. Improved community aesthetics, enhanced public safety. Equity is huge. Proactive enforcement, you're applying the standards uniformly across the community. And it helps reduce the potential for people claiming that you're picking on them, that there's bias and favoritism. Because you're doing it proactively, not just based on who's choosing to pick up the phone and call about something that particular day. And then you could realize some long-term cost savings through early detection and corrections of things that could eventually cost a whole lot more to fix. The cons are higher operational costs to do more proactive stuff. The potential for overreach, there's at least a risk or a perception of overregulation which can lead to tensions between the community members and between the community and the elected officials. Resistance from property owners, you know, why are you here talking to me about this? Nobody called and complained, who cares, kind of thing. Which kind of gets back around to, if, if it's on the books and you're choosing to just, you're not looking the other way necessarily. You're just choosing not to enforce it at this particular time. You have to provide some rationale for why that you're doing that. Whether it's lack of resources or whatever else may, may be. And then the administrative burden. There's a lot of administrative burden involved in high-volume proactive code enforcement. BSA software is here?
Yes.
BSNA software is fabulous for tracking that, those records. And it can be viewed online through a public portal by anybody in the community that's interested. So I'll just wrap this up by saying that I think your, your number one choice is whether or not to remain reactive. Switch to a proactive model or find some hybrid happy middle ground someplace. The hybrid approach can be very, very successful if it's done right, but it has to be well-informed when you make those decisions. But what you're doing now seems to be working for the most part, with the exception of I saw statistic, statistical data that was provided by your office staff recently on the number of complaints, the category, the types of complaints and then the status. And there seemed to be a lot of open cases still from quite some time, which just says, for whatever reason, it wasn't brought to a successful resolution in a real timely manner. And sometimes cases can be like that. It's not necessarily the stats' fault. I can give you horror stories about properties where you're out to the, to the same property for the same thing, time and time again, for years or decades. I see former Mayor Driscoll shaking her head. I know she's well familiar with that. So for, in terms of recommendations, I would urge you to conduct some kind of community survey. Either through the mail or online to gather feedback on your current enforcement approach and what the community thinks is appropriate and what they would like to see. Evaluate the feasibility of incorporating some proactive measures. Still prioritizing those very high public safety topics. And then take a look at your resource allocation and determine if any adjustments are needed. I would assume since you contract for policing that you have a millage. There may be an opportunity there if the community agrees. So you have a lot of options. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or help bear any more concerns.
Can I just add, so I attached this, this month I put the planning report immediately behind this. And you can see, if you look on page thirty-two, there's always a table on code enforcement. So if you want to see what code enforcement is, activities are, you can always see that on, in the planning report that's included in every month's package. And if, if ever, I, I'm speaking for Megan, but if you guys ever want any different data on this. You, you're, you're welcome to just reach out and ask because we're, we are happy to report on what is, whatever is of interest to the board. On code enforcement or any other planning-related matters.
Laura?
So any, any questions on this?
I don't have any questions. I just have, you know, a discussion with the board. I really appreciate learning about the proactive and reactive. The hybrid approach would be, I think, fantastic for Dexter Township. Not only are we a lake community where everyone emphasizes on the lakes. We are also a farming community that now in the last twenty years has pockets of residential, residential communities popping up. So you get the animals, you get the smells, you get the tractors on the roads. So now we all have to coincide and there can co-live and there, there can be, you know, issues with all of those. All the newness. On, on top of, yes, we have the lakes, but a lot of those lake properties are now being demolished and big homes are going up. So especially off of Grove Road over there, I know they've had quite a few neighborly disputes with how tall they're getting and how long they're taking to complete and, you know, how far they are against, are away from the shore. So I really appreciated this conversation. And I, I just look forward to making the decision. Because it's, I've, I've expressed this to both the supervisor and the charger and now to the board that, I mean, code enforcement is very important. And I'm the clerk. So, you know, when they come in, I, I, I feel the need that there needs to be someone that is, you know, they understand that position and they can, you know, handle that side of Dexter Township, so.
The human element and the problem-solving skills.
Absolutely.
Conflict management is critically important. Critically important. And I agree with you. I think the hybrid model is likely going to suit you best. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
But don't leave guys because there's more planning-related topics than I, so the short-term rentals discussion. I, I wanted everyone to know that we, so I think I have mentioned in the past that I attended a workshop on short-term rentals at the MTA conference. It was very interesting. They laid out some of the planning options, just like Mike did just now. And I was thinking to myself at the time, well, we, we eventually should take this up. But we'll, but this is a large and complex topic and we haven't had any complaints yet. And so we'll just, we'll just, we, we have many more urgent matters that we're taking up now. We did get our first complaint on, on this and exactly what Mike talked about happened where we sent a letter in, in, in conformance with our longstanding policy and practice. We sent a letter to the person that was running the Airbnb and they said, well, how, you know, how is this fair? There's ten Airbnbs on my lake and why am I getting an enforcement letter and the person next door who's doing the same thing isn't? Well, this is our policy. And then we, we had people who are running, or other, other people who heard that we had sent this letter and have been running Airbnbs for many years, reaching out and saying, I'm, I'm distressed because I've now learned that it's not allowed and I didn't know that before. And so we're getting a lot of feedback into the township right now about short-term rentals. And so I just wanted to frame that for all of you guys, but again, I can't say it enough. I don't think we have time to take up either of these matters really before, in our term of office. So I just, I want you all to be aware of what's happening in the township. But also I'm aware that, that we have other matters that are time pressing and we won't be able to do this now. So if you're out, when you're out and about, you'll hear people talking about code enforcement, you'll hear people talking about short-term rentals. And there are policy matters that do need to be taken up by the board.
So was there a complaint and that was the issue?
Mm-hmm. Yep, there was a complaint. And we just, you know, because as I always say, I'm a policy-driven person and so I said, okay, well, we'll just follow our policy. And our policy is when we have a complaint, we, we, we inform people of what the law is. Our law happens to be that only bed and breakfasts are allowable short-term use.
In that particular case, I had conversations with the, with the property owner about the situation and they've chosen to look at applying for special land use as a bed and breakfast. So complying with the township's rules and ordinance at this, and zoning ordinance at this point. So we'll continue to work with them to bring it into compliance. But we had, last week there was a lot of.
Anxious Airbnb.
Anxious.
I think I caught some of those conversations at the water cooler, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was like, oh, what's going on over there?
I was at another community meeting where they had set up a subcommittee and I know we're halfway through the summer. So probably not till the winter to do this, but I do think it's something that needs to be a community conversation.
I agree with that.
It's pretty controversial, but I think the timing is not good.
Yeah, I liked what you guys did on the renewables to have a subcommittee that, that organized a community conversation or maybe.
Yeah, and there was also, because it was at MTA, also because there was conversation about having a state law around short-term rentals. And it was really controversial. So I think that maybe we just, like you said, put it on the radar. But it seems like we're in the middle of the summer and like to start trying to, I, I think what we're trying to do is just make sure, you know, we protect the health and welfare of the neighbors and if there's issues that they get addressed. For the short term. No pun intended.
I, I do think it's important too, and I, I know we've already said it, but just to, to say it clearly as well that this was not the township proactively going out to find Airbnbs and enforce a longstanding ordinance. This was brought on based on a complaint and that we followed our standard process. Because I, I, I know the contact has started. Because I, I, I know the contact has started, I don't know if everyone else received one today, but even Airbnb, their government relations office has now sent an email wanting to provide us all with stats and information. So, you know, just making sure that everyone understands that the board does know that this is an issue that we need to address, but also that it is not an issue that we can rush into and make that decision hastily. I think we're gonna have to, our, our community, as everyone has said, and certainly hearing from Mike tonight is helpful. I, for those of you who don't know, I grew up in Ipslandi Township, so have known Mike for a long time. And we are a very different community than that. And so, you know, I think everyone talking about how unique our area is, we're gonna have to hear from residents, have these public discussions, and see what is best for our community, not only for how we're doing zoning enforcement, but also on a big issue like the short-term rental issue.
I agree. Other comments on those topics? And then the action item is a very minor change that I'm requ, so, so in line with my efforts right now, which are not to make any major policy decisions or changes as we're gliding into the home stretch of our terms, because I won't be the supervisor. Our zoning administrator has given notice. She's, she's no longer with the township. We were not able to keep up with the permit, with the volume of permit processing and code enforcement activities with the twenty-four-hour-a-week position. That was too aggressive. And so Carlisle Wartman has, has been, for a few months, supplementing that twenty-four hours a week with another, you know, mid-career planner, who has been working an average of eight hours a week. And rather than pay Carlisle Wartman its higher rate for that, what, so rather than bit of advertising for a twenty-four-hour-a-week, I just want to advertise for a thirty-two-hour-a-week. And the advantage to that, I think one of the big issues that, that, what we hear from the community is that they just want to have somebody there when we're open, who's in the planning department, and this will cover us for all our open hours as well. So it's replacing eight hours of Carlisle Wartman with eight hours of staff, and that staff will be in the office all, during all of our, our open hours. So this is a pretty minor change, and that's pretty much all I'm comfortable with making at the end of my term. So, any questions about that?
Yeah, just a second. Okay, so you are proposing a thirty-two-hour-a-week planner?
Yes, well, a zoning administrator, which is somebody who processes the permits and investigates the code enforcement complaints. If it gets to the point of needing a citation, then we need help from, from the Carlisle Wartman Code Enforcement Division.
Because see, I agree with having a thirty-two-hour planner in-house. I, I know we've discussed this before, and possibly having Carlisle Wartman on retainer for when we have bigger ideas or things we cannot handle. But I, I feel very strongly about having a code enforcement officer. I don't like both of those positions being entwined. I like a planner to understand planning and deal with that avenue of expertise, and then a code enforcement officer being, you know, at a minimum sixteen hours, up to twenty-four hours, depending on the season, depending, you know, as needed. That's...
I, I think, I, I feel aligned with you on that. I think that that, and I think Mike is sort of indicating that he thinks that's probably the best approach for us long-term as well. The only thing I'm saying now is, is let's, let's, let's continue on with what we have now until the next term, and then we'll take up the matter, you guys can take up the matter of code enforcement. Because if you decide to move to a proactive approach, or, or a mixed approach, you're gonna need a different staffing configuration that, we don't exactly know what kind of staffing we need for code enforcement right now, because we have this future policy decis, this is my thinking, anyway. We have this future policy decision to make about code enforcement. So is this the time, it, it seems to me that you guys, because I know you'll be the clerk, because you're on a post, you guys should make this decision and then hire appropriately for the level of enforcement that you decide you want to have. I also have Sarah looking into, it was just, I have to say, it was just coincidence that I asked for this presentation and this analysis. I didn't know, it was, this all happened prior to Ashley quitting. But then, seeing the results of this analysis, I just feel like I don't know what kind of code enforcement we need right now. And so I agree that it's not optimal, and that probably, long-term, a different approach will make sense for us. But I'm just, I don't want to be the one that spearheads that change right now. And I, what I was gonna say is that Sarah is also looking into us, looking into this question about funding sources, what are the possible funding sources for this, for, for the future? So that, that will also fold into this decision.
And I appreciate, you know, your comment, but I really, as the person that's gonna be in this chair again, as the person that's going through a contentious election, I like the idea of having, first off, I, I, I do feel inclined to want to have an in-house...
Yeah, I think we all...
In-house, in-house both, planning as well as zoning, with that higher expertise that we can, we can have Carlisle on a retainer, if they do that type of consulting work. But...
Well, I'm still, to, to, to be clear to Michelle, I'm not, I'm also not...
Right now, I just feel we don't have anything right now. And that concerns me, and now, you know, the Airbnb has been brought up, and there's still issues that are out there that haven't been completely resolved. And there are people that do come in, and we are very familiar when, gosh, I'm sorry, what was his name?
Mike.
Mike, yes. When Mike was bringing up, you know, we, we did have the forum, and the majority of our people that would come in with a complaint, most of them did want to be anonymous, which I can totally appreciate. No one wants to, their neighbor to know it was me. So I guess that's, that's my big concern, is, you know, not even advertising. We already had someone that left, and now that position is just open.
I get, well, we just had a presentation that potentially would change our whole model. And I think hiring a position when we're talking about potentially changing our model is not, doesn't, that's not a good process. I think it's better to address the model of how we're gonna provide the service of code enforcement, whether or not it's gonna be reactive, proactive, or a hybrid, which, the hybrid would be different than what we're doing right now. So I think we probably want to, you know, Mike recommended we do a community survey, get some feedback from the community on the model. So that would be the first step in the process, and in the meantime, we can hire out that service of code enforcement until, until we figure out the, what the best process for the township is. Because I think we're all on the same page, Michelle. That's all I want to say, is that I, it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse to hire the position again, is, I, in my mind, I think, so.
And I can appreciate that. It's just, you know, coming into this position, everything really ran smooth. So I, I'm, we were just talking about bumpy roads earlier, so I mean, it is, it's just...
And I, I mean, we, we had people that have been in those roles. I, I think anytime you have turnover, people are, I mean, and our member of the public spoke to this. You know, you invest time in somebody learning the ordinance, it really is unfortunate that we, we're having turnover again. But when you have peoples in the role longstanding, it, it does run smoothly. So that's true. There have been bumps. And I'm not proposing to change the Carlisle Wartman contract with this. I'll, I, I mean, I'm still proposing to have Carlisle Wartman helping with, you know, with supervising the person, which I find tremendously valuable because of my lack of expertise in planning. And also taking up these policy matters, like the changes to the zoning ordinance that we have been, you know, cleaning up the zoning ordinance. Carlisle Wartman is also helping us with, with, Megan does the complex, the big complex developments. So like, there's, there's something now at, at, you know, there, there are developments that are coming up, and it's, and that is not a permit processing matter. That's a figure, requires kind of a higher level of expertise. So I'm not, I'm not proposing Carlisle Wartman on retainer. I'm proposing basically to keep the same model, and then let, then the future supervisor propose a model that works for this board, and for them, and for the community. I, I, I do want to say for the community to know that we do have open items, but the data don't show that it's taking us longer to close our zoning, our code enforcement than previously. So it's, it's not that we've, that our, it's not that our closure rate is slower than it was. So we are doing the work, but it is, it does have a different feel than it did when we had a code enforcement officer in the office. But the work is happening, and it's happening as, as quickly as it was before. I just want people to know that. It's not that we're not acting on these, we are acting on them. But people do get frustrated about code enforcement, because their neighbor is making a mess, you know, and they want quick action, and there's just no doubt about that. It's frustrating. Any other comments on this, or should I call for a motion?
It's just good to get more informed. I feel more informed about it, and want to think about it.
I think the biggest surprise for me, too, was just, property rights are really, we have really strong property rights in this country, so it's not as simple as you ran a stop line sign, and here's your, your, your citation. Property owners who are the subject of complaints have a lot of rights, and these are more complex.
Right.
Kind of, and so, I mean, I don't want to say more complex, but they're complex in a way that I don't think I really understood.
So with this thirty-two-hour-a-week planner with a, with a co-experience of code enforcement, would that be a hired in, or would that be...
No, this would just be, I'm just on a post, I just want to replace Ashley, but I want to replace her with someone instead of... So when we advertised for Ashley, we were looking for somebody with, you know, with a recent planning degree, or one to two years' experience. But I think what I've learned is that the, even the permit processing is a little bit more complex than I think I appreciated. So I want to get somebody with three to five years' experience. And then I went to the BLS Data, Bureau of Labor Statistics, and I saw that those, that that's a little bit high. It's still within the range that we had for that position, but I, I predict that we'll have to pay more toward the high end of the range for the position, because someone with three to five years' experience, instead of one to two years' experience.
And like I said, I, I mean, I totally understand the perspective of a planner, but I feel like we just had Ashley in-house, and she was, she stated to me uncomfortable, more uncomfortable with the code enforcement aspect of the job. So I, 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 I can understand that we might want to take a different approach, or learn a different approach, or, you know, have community discussion, but I'm still not understanding the point of not having a dedicated code enforcement officer that can actually grow with this new approach that we want to take. Someone that has the experience and the dedication, and may or may not live locally, but, and, you know, invest their time here in the township to understand our ordinances. That is someone that strictly works for Dexter Township, not, you know, you know, someone that, that is familiar with all... It's just someone that the community can relate to. They know that person's name. They know that person has a sense of community to Dexter Township. So, I mean, I guess pretty much everything I say, everyone knows my feelings on how I proceed with my...
And I think we, I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with any, with any of this. It's just that I'm not comfortable implementing a change in the organizational structure right now.
So instead of trying to hire a planner that has, and you want three to five years...
I want a zoning administrator, yeah.
Okay, and that person, because is it that gonna be difficult to find somebody that's gonna be able to do code enforcement?
We'll have to, we'll have to see, you know, we're, we're, we'll have to advertise for it and see.
He has a very unique set of, you know, qualifications for that specific job.
Yeah, for sure.
Where Megan has a very unique set of skills for her. I've seen her in action in Dexter City, Dexter Township, so, I mean, I, I do value the approach of, you know, and, and I know there's people out there that, that do have those qualifications as well, and, and I, I take it seriously.
Well, so I think I'm hearing that everybody's comfortable with the thirty-two-hours-a-week zoning administrator, but it's a question of if, if we want an additional position.
Do you think it would be wise, then, just to hire a zoning officer that can process permits?
I don't think that, I don't...
Do we need, you know what I mean? Like, I think it would be, I, I think I understand what Michelle was trying to say, is that maybe instead of that, then we just hire a code enforcement officer that...
I just don't want to...
Because... No?
Well, I, I...
You guys are proposing changes in the organizational structure on the fly at a meeting, and I, I'm not, I don't know that I would feel comfortable. I think we need, we, we could, we could just continue with Carlisle Wartman and increase our contracted cost, not, not potentially. I don't know, although Carlisle Wartman, I think, is a little bit understaffed. But, Melanie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I, I feel like we're all very much agreeing on, like, an eventual direction of wanting to pull the stuff back in-house, and, and feeling like that's the... The question that it, it seems to me, and I want to parse this out, because I want to make sure I'm understanding, Michelle, is whether or not we are going to move forward with sort of what we've had for, for right now, with some additional hours. So Ash, Ashley's position was this that we're talking about. So it's really an increase of eight hours, but the same type of work.
Yeah, and she did a combination of permit processing, and she would go do the, do the...
Right, as an interim step, until we figure out what the policy structure may be. Because if we, what I heard Mike and other folks say is, if we are going to change our enforcement structure to a hybrid structure, or a more proactive structure, at least in my mind, what I'm hearing is that's gonna be more than the amount of time that a split zoning administrator would do. We would definitely need a separate code enforcement officer. But until we have made that decision of what that process looks like, whether it's going to be proactive, hybrid, reactive, what, what we've been doing now, that's a bigger policy decision where we really need to talk to the community and get input about what that zoning enforcement looks like. So how will we, I guess what I'm struggling with is how, how will we know what that zoning enforcement position, if we had a separate position, how many hours we would need, what that would look like, what their tasks would be? We'd be creating essentially a, a new position without the understanding of what the overall structure of what we want them to do would be. And I, that's what I'm struggling with. It just doesn't seem to, to set that person up for success.
So the person that we will be hiring will carry on forward with the hybrid model, then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, our model right now is reactive, so they would be carrying on with, with what... I think all of the, what, what I'm struggling with is that, I think it's the timeline of things that have happened, right? So we were already going to have to have this policy discussion about our enforcement. Then Ashley was leaving.
Yes.
And now we've received a complaint about another big policy issue that requires enforcement. So those are all three things that are sort of...
That, like, all happened at once, and was like, oh, my gosh, how, how do I handle all this? But, but the, the other thing that Megan has mentioned to me, and Ashley, and I think Grace and all say the same, is that code enforcement ticks up a lot when, in, when the, when the winter is over, and everybody goes outside, and they see what their next-door neighbors are doing, then, then they, they come in and they make complaints. And then it, and then it levels off, and then it, there isn't as much activity at all in the wintertime. So it's more hours in the, in the summer, and spring, and summer, and then it starts tapering off. And so in my mind, I was thinking, well, we've probably had, we'll still get complaints. It's not that we won't get complaints, but we've probably had a lot of the complaints that we're getting for this season, and we're managing these through to the end, and then it'll be November, and we can have these community conversations and make these policies, policy decisions, and then maybe we're gonna want more hours, or, or whatever. But it seems like we can manage the package that we have in front of us with the model that we have, because I'm not expecting a big deluge, you know, and then, and then we'll make our policy decision later. It's just bad timing, it's like you're saying, Lonnie, and it's, and it puts me in a, in a little bit of a question mark, like, what should I be do, what should I do now? Because what I do commits the future admin... Because what I do commits the future administration to a path and I don't feel comfortable with that. And a lot of, a lot of elected bodies do try to set a path for the future, but I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that.
And so I just want to make sure I'm understa, Michelle, your preferred approach today would be to say, to keep the position that we're, that Ashley was in at the 24 hours and then add?
I would even, I would even think to advertise it, and I did already state this, from let's say 16, 20 hours a week up to 24 hours a week, if someone could fit in there in, in that, those hours, and I did state a bit ago, you know, depending on the season. I mean, if I call 911, I mean, the fire trucks might not be rolling all the time, but when something comes in, I really feel that the community deserves to have someone that works a set of hours and a person that has that skillset to be able to deal with code enforcement issues. I've had to be up at the counter dealing with code enforcement issues and I'm not comfortable with that position. I didn't sign up for that position, but, but I've been, we've all been put into that position because our previous code enforcement officer slash.
We don't have to go.
But, you know, I mean, it was, I, I just really want to know that, that, that these two, these two particular jobs are separate. And I, I really believe if, I, I don't understand why anyone, I mean, even Mike, even Kevin, two people that have spoke today, could come in and be able to adapt to if we add a hybrid or if we change our approach, if we don't stay reactive, but we want to transition a little bit towards something else. Anyone with those type of credentials, I'm sure can, can adapt. That is just, I just want to make my point clear that I, I really do believe that there should be, and, and that's not just Dexter Township, the city of Chelsea, the majority of the townships around us, they do have a dedicated individual that does, you know, deal with upholding our ordinances and our complaints.
So what if I do a little research over the next month and find out what our surrounding communities are doing in terms of staffing code enforcement and come back to the board next month with some benchmark information about code enforcement and how many hours they have? Because I think Maris, you've mentioned that from what your service on Caca, you've learned a lot of municipalities have on-call or as-needed code enforcement. So I could find out what, you know, we could, we could identify surrounding entities and come back to the board with some information about what others are doing for next month? What do you think about that?
I just, I don't want to jump into, you know, hiring someone and, excuse me, I don't want to hire someone that doesn't have their credentials. I guess that's where I'm coming from when it comes to the code enforcement, but I do appreciate that too and that's why I did reach out and I've spoken with the city of Chelsea. I've heard Sylvan Township actually shares a code enforcement officer with another municipality.
But I, but I would like to do that because, because this is, the planning function does report to the supervisor, so I would like to, I would like to collect and get an understanding.
Well, that's fine, I mean, before I even come to these type of discussions, I definitely do my homework and I reach out just to see, you know, what are other municipalities doing? Why did we have one for so long? You know, I never heard the issues of people coming in, you know?
And what I've, what I've.
Because things weren't taken care of.
And what I understand from Grayson and Ashley is that the code enforcement, if they had to be, if we held their feet to the fire and said, how many of your 32 hours are on code enforcement versus permit processing? It's about 24 hours of permit processing, eight hours of code enforcement. So that's based on our reactive, average over the year, but some weeks it's more, some weeks it's less, and the idea is it's average over the year.
So are you proposing then to postpone this?
I think we should, I think we need to hire a zoning administrator to process our permits because, and to be present.
So do you want it to be back at 24 hours then?
No, I think it should be, I, I think that we can.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize supervisor to hire a planner at 32 hours per week. Because we've had, this is a long conversation, I think we were all very clear, we need code enforcement, we want code enforcement, we don't know how we're going to do it yet, we've been reactive, we will continue to be reactive until we do more studying. And I think we've had a long conversation, so I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, then do I have a second?
Can you restate the motion, sorry?
Motion is to hire, to authorize supervisor to hire a planner at 32 hours a week.
Uh, clarification, not hiring a planner.
Hiring a zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator, excuse me.
That's a misprint in the.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, then I will take a vote, okay?
I, I do want to ask one question though. I second it so we could move along and finalize discussion. I just, Michelle, do you, do you object to hiring this position at all as a planner while we figure out? Or as a zoning administrator to handle the planning functions?
I was waiting for discussion actually to bring that up. If it is a zoning administrator, administrator, then I'm no, because I really feel that for planning aspects, yes. But I do not feel comfortable saying yes because I feel that until the next administration, we won't even come back to the table for a code enforcement officer.
Okay, so, so let, let me ask a question of Carlisle-Wartman then. I mean, my original idea was to ask Carlisle-Wartman just to continue this function for us until this, until the, until the election, but, but I, I don't know if they have the capacity basically to, and it will cost us money, but it'll be money for a few months and I don't know if they have the capacity to handle it.
Yes, it is.
Can I just say something really fast? I'm sorry, and, and maybe in this, maybe you can help me here. I think maybe the perception and maybe what some people are wondering is that we hired Carlisle-Wartman and maybe we need to clarify what we hired you for, you know, because we hired you at a certain amount in a contract to do certain jobs, right? And so then Ashley came in, she really wasn't able to fill the zoning portion of it, she was very good at processing payments, but she's now quit. So there's gaps.
Processing permits.
Processing permits, what did I say?
You said payments.
Sorry.
Madam Kaiser.
I'm in tax code, permits, permits. So I think that, I think maybe the uncomfortability is the fact that, you know, like, we're, what's, what are the gaps that we need to fill? What is the immediate thing that we need right now? And, and from what I'm hearing from everybody is that it's not completely enforcement right now, right? You need more somebody that can come in and just process permits. And you guys don't do that, that's not part of your contract.
To answer your question, and I had this discussion with your supervisor, is recommended looking for a full-time zoning administrator, so someone who's here four days a week to handle all of the permits and also to answer the phone calls, to respond to emails. And another factor that you should keep in mind is that Hillside Acres is going to start building houses.
Yeah.
And so that amount of permit work is going, for single-family houses is going to go up.
Yeah.
With the work that we did with Ashley and Grayson and myself over the past couple of months to get the single-family home checklist, so those reviews are going to go faster and smoother and are going to be more comprehensive. However, you're still going to have those coming in and you're still going to have fences, decks, signs, all of those things. And those also all ramp up in the summer and the spring. I agree with Clerk Stambulis that the code enforcement function is very different than a zoning administrator or a planning function and that the township would benefit from having both of those positions and had talked to Supervisor Sikkenga about that. So two things, in this temporary part, in this temporary time where you do not have anybody in either one of those positions, we can help for a month or two, but we cannot be a solution until November. We have the capacity to help both on the planning side and the code enforcement side and so we can do either of those as needed while staffing, planning commission and zoning Board of Appeals as whoever comes in gets up to speed. And then later on, we'd be happy to talk about retainers and future work and how we fit in. Also want to emphasize, whenever we come into a community, we're looking to be part of the community and most of our clients we've had for decades and we would hope that that would be Dexter Township as well. So in terms of what to do at this moment, because the code enforcement goes up and down and because we've got good weeks and bad weeks and we've been able to manage with Grayson's particular skills, because he was a code enforcement officer for City of Plymouth before he came to work for us, I feel like if you had to choose between those two positions to hire, I would recommend hiring the zoning administrator over the code enforcement officer at this point. But I think it would be critical for the board to continue to have conversations about where you want that to go and then have some recommendations perhaps when the new board comes in in order to be able to look to hire that position and institute changes right in the beginning of 2025. So I hope that.
Much better than I did.
I, I hope that's helpful and I want to emphasize that, again, we're here to help and, and we want to be part of the community, but I fully recognize and have said to Supervisor King and I think to Clerk Stambulis that having somebody here that people know and build relationships with and that is always here sitting in a seat or answering the phone is very helpful and I think helps not only with zoning administration, but also code enforcement. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So right now, priority is processing permits, we need somebody and then down the line, the next board will decide whether we need.
Well, we, I think we all think we're going to need a code enforcement.
We need it, but for how long?
But for how, how, how many hours a week and what's the, and I had forgotten, we did have this conversation about, yeah, because Kyle, Grayson has this experience and so it's easier for him to backfill, plus he's the one that has been handling a lot of the, of these code enforcement issues, so he can just keep, keep handling them through to the end.
But it's the way it's worded in here that I can't get over. The zoning administrator with, so zoning ord, zoning enforcement and permit processing, which will then become the zoning administrator position. I can understand the planning administrator, absolutely, but the combination of the two?
Can, can you clarify what the title zoning administrator typically means?
Yeah, what page are you on?
Thirty-six, thank you. A zoning administrator will be involved with code enforcement specifically when it violates the zoning ordinance, so they would often write memos dealing with what the violation is, they might inspect things, they, they might help, help, help with that. And again, in this moment, if you only had one person and you were hiring at this point, I would recommend that you have that zoning enforcement as part of it and then look to take that away from that position later.
Well, and, and I think, I meant, like, a plant, planner is like a generic term like lawyer or engineer and an engineer might be, so, so a zoning administrator is a particular kind of planner who, who, who understands the zoning ordinance and, and reviews permit.
I, I think there's a little more distinction between the two. A zoning administrator is administering all the day-to-day functions of zoning within a municipality and that can be anywhere from answering the phones to processing permits to staffing boards, planning commissions, et cetera. However, usually that position requires a certification and maybe an associate's or a bachelor's degree. When you're looking at a planner position or director of planning or zoning, you're usually looking at a bachelor's, master's degree and also several years' experience to get. Often zoning administrators will transition through their career to be a planner. Some people also just love the zoning administration, they love being in that, in that day-to-day. I think with the four-day-a-week full-time position that you have advertised, you're very good to get probably, and Mike said this to me when we were talking about this, is wow, you could get somebody who just retired from a zoning administrator job that really is a 46, 50-hour job and 50-hour-a-week job and they'll look at this as being something that's a bit of a, something that they'd want to do later in their career. And so you might have somebody like that or you might get somebody with, but with those three to five years, we talked about, that being necessary in order to some of the things, dealing with the crises and things that you have day-to-day in zoning administration. So I'm sorry to respectfully disagree, but.
Yeah, well, that's why, I mean, that's why I look to you to, I'm advised by Megan and this, and what, this is why I want to have a.
Yeah, they're a little bit, they're a little bit different, so. And often that zoning administrator is involved in code enforcement, especially when it has to deal with the zoning ordinance. It's true that really a truly hybrid position where they're doing 50% of their job is code enforcement, 50% of your, their job is zoning administrator is unusual.
But most of the work, the most hours, so, so when you're talking about, you have a planner, a higher-level person with a bachelor's degree, you have zoning administration, which is all the things that you just mentioned and it's code enforcement. Am I right in thinking that Dexter Township's, the main bulk of our work is zoning administration?
The thing that takes them, a lot, the bulk of the work is zoning administration over the course of a year.
Yeah.
The, the, the code enforcement ramps up and the, the code enforcement can take a lot of more emotional bandwidth, just because you're, you're, you're dealing with people who are, where emotions are running high.
And the other thing that you told me that I think bears repeating is that often when Carlisle-Wartman takes a contract with a municipality, you, you spend a lot of hours initially doing some of the things that we've been doing and then over time, your hours might diminish as this work is accomplished and we're, we move into maintenance mode.
Yeah, yeah, yep, and, and, and we've had a model with lots of our communities and, yeah, I would.
And then we might have you come in and help us like with the renewables ordinance or, you know, community engagement or whatever, but it wouldn't be, once we get.
Large developments.
Yeah, well, large developments or whatever, but once we get through this, this.
Yeah, once you get your team in place and they're running solid, then we fade into the background and are here to support.
Yeah.
And.
And provide and help us with consistency when, you know, we have turnover because we're such a small shop.
And some communities, many communities, we, we are in a retainer, so you have certain hours of ours a week and a month.
Fantastic.
And then, and that you know that we're available, that we've blocked those off. And then other communities, it's as needed, so.
And then other large communities, always. I mean, is it a possibility? I don't know, I don't want to keep this going, but.
Yeah, I think, I think, I would, I think, I think everybody understands the situation now and can, so can I?
Can we repeat the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Motion is to authorize the supervisor to hire a zoning administrator at 32 hours per week.
And it was seconded by Lonnie. All right, so I, I will take a vote. So Gretchen Friskel?
Yes.
Lonnie Scott?
Yes.
Maris Metz?
I'm just going to have to say no because I, I, I do have other things to say, so, I mean, and I liked your idea of, I liked your idea of holding off, but I'm, I'm just going to say no on this one.
Okay, Laura Sanders?
Yes.
Michelle Stambulis?
No.
Karen Sikkenga, yes. So with the, so that's, so I guess that's it, the motion carries. Okay. So then why don't we move on to the next item on the agenda? Great discussion, really appreciated that. Difficult, it's a difficult problem and bad timing.
So.
Can I just ask a question? Are you still going to bench, do the benchmark of the code enforcement?
I can.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we need to continue to move that process forward to figuring out that position and talk about how, what that position's going to look like.
Yep.
I just hope it's somebody that, you know, can deal with the high emotions and everything that everybody was talking about, you know, because we do get disgruntled.
Sure, I mean, I think that's clear, we know that. Sure, I mean, I think that's clear, we know that. I mean, that's been made very clear tonight.
Yeah.
I knew that, so...
The safety aspect was made clear, but, yeah.
And seeing it in the office, working day-to-day.
So what's up next on the agenda is the discussion of the furniture in the basement. Michelle, you had some questions about that.
I do, so I apologize, I didn't look at page three. I saw the photos on page fifteen, I believe, and that's what I saw on the... On page one of the agenda. So I did not realize that they were going to be like this. So they're going to lift, is that correct?
No, 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 they don't...
Are they heavy?
No, they don't...
Are they going to be moved around?
They're, yeah, they're on wheels. So they're really, really awesome. Basically, they're wheeled, and they don't lift, but they flip so you can store them. So it makes low-profile, low-profile storage, so if you only need two tables. So we're ordering six. What I hope we do is order six to start, and they flip like that and nest storage. But they're not, they don't lift. But there is one, there's a desk proposed for the office down there that will be the sit-stand desk, not an L. Not an L, but just a straight one because it's not a, you know, nobody's assigned to that office. So it was a lower cost to go with this, just a simpler desk.
And all of these desks can be utilized for the county board.
These tables, yeah, these aren't really desks. You know, it's like a conference, it's like a modular conference table.
Here's a picture.
Yeah, I'm thinking of a big conference desk, but correct. So I just wanted to make sure they were going to be multipurpose so they can be utilized for dominantly that room. We might have a meeting or two a year that might do have conflicts, but I know dominantly that space needs to be elections-friendly.
Yeah, yeah, so the intention was, so they'll be... You can set them up like in a training format with six separate... They don't have to be together at all. They could just be, you know, six separate, or they can be in a donut, or they can be all together in a big table, or you can take as many as you want and fold the other ones up and push them off to the side. So it...
That was my big question.
Yeah.
Are they going to be stationed? Am I going to have an issue with... Are them, they even like to, I'll set their room up and then they like to re-set their room up?
They can wheel them around. And the purposes that I think, that I... So I know that DAFD is hoping to do training there and that the tables, you know, to be able to set it up in a training format will be good for them. And then the Board of Review might meet down there because they want to have big tables that they can...
Understandable.
You know, so they can push it all together, and then they'll have large surface space that they can push things together. So I think this modular will work well for elections, which is the top priority, but I think it'll also work for the other.
As long as it's a multipurpose, functional room, that's why I wanted to bring it up the consent agenda so I could make sure that, you know, it would be user-friendly for every committee or election that needs to utilize it.
Okay. So any more discussion about that? Or can I ask for a motion to allow me to order? The furniture won't be here by the election.
We have white tables, it's fine.
Yeah. But it'll be here by the...
By the general, maybe.
By the general, yeah. Okay, so can I get a motion to authorize a payment? Oh, no, to approve the furniture expense for the lower-level renovation?
So moved. I move approval of the furniture expense for lower-level remodel.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on. Let's go to page thirty-nine. This is a thing that we do annually. It's a, I mean, Sarah just stepped out of the room, but because I believe it's a resolution to approve the 2025 mileage rates is required, and so it couldn't go on. It's routine business, can't be on the consent agenda, can't really say no to it. But I did want to just call out, a shout-out to Chris Rainius because once again, we had a perfect audit. He does a fantastic job. And this is really his work. Last year, he was here to talk to you guys about it, but this year, we didn't think we needed to repeat that educational session. So any discussion about that?
Yeah, kudos to Chris, fantastic, being a former accountant.
Well, he was brought in, I guess, you know, yeah, he does a great job.
Yeah, he's great.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the 2024 tax rate request?
So moved.
Moved by Metz, and can I get a second?
Support.
Support by Stambulas. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, then that's approved. And we'll move on to acceptance of the financial transactions. Page fifty-two. We're on track overall, I mean, as always. We are going to have a couple of expenses coming up for more compliance with the, with the new requirements for elections, cameras, and so forth. Any questions on that financial transaction? Okay, then can I have a motion to, for acceptance of the financial transactions for... It says period two, but this was actually period three.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Metz, seconded by Scott. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so hearing none, then the financial transactions were accepted. The rest of the stuff is just on the table of contents for what's in your package, but is, are there questions on any of that before I go to the second call for public comment on non-agenda items?
This is going out, correct? It's the, the whole question is on the graph.
The, 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 that's preliminary findings from the survey. The survey is still live. It's going to be live until the end of the month, but once I close it, I'll give a complete report.
Sure, but I know what the questions are, but don't you share this with me?
No, I mean, it just gets sucked in.
Oh, I thought...
I could send it.
I thought just sometimes or some other people...
They do look at the supervisor's report, but I don't...
You might just want to, like, make those questions fully, yeah. A great job, I mean, I think it's really exciting that we got good response and...
Of course, I was excited because roads were first.
Your personal mission.
My personal, yeah, my personal mission in life. Okay, so now to the second call for public comment on non-agenda items. Any member of the public want to speak? Brad.
Brad Metz, ninety-eight hundred Toma Road. I know that we discussed, as you walked in, about, you know, part of the reason why I'm here is I really like watching the livestream. And the livestream volume is ridiculous. Oh, I don't know.
Has the green light on?
But, yeah, it is, yes, it is. But, I mean, it's so quiet. Like, even turning up the livestream volume and the computer volume, you're still ear-right up to it. So I don't know, and it's been like that for a little bit. I'm like, well, I kind of get the gist, but it's not probably the way it should be.
Yeah.
And like I said, I know that we have talked about it before. I just wanted it out there, so...
Oh, that's great, I appreciate that.
Hopefully we can get it fixed. And don't tell my students that I like watching the meetings online.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to speak? Okay, then hearing none, then we'll go to other issues, comments, and concerns by board members. I'll start with you, Maris.
Emily, thank you, I think I've shared enough.
You, Michelle.
The clerk's office sent out one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven absentee voter ballots. I just want to remind the community that this is a partisan primary election. So you definitely want to remember that that is a straight-party vote. The general election is when you can make your decisions all over the ballot. Other than that, we will be conducting the public accuracy testing for the tabulators, the Dexter Township tabulators on July twenty-ninth, Monday, July twenty-ninth, at ten-thirty a.m.
And everyone should come. Anybody that's listening to this, it's really interesting. And if you, if you, if you have any...
I want to see them in action.
Yeah, if you have any questions about the elections and how it works, it is really fun to see the public accuracy testing of the ballots.
And you'll be able to cast a slew of ballots that have a little stray mark on them, if there's an overvote, if you, oops, I was supposed to vote in...
The twenty-ninth at ten-thirty.
Dexter City, and I happen to just come to Dexter Township, it will not accept those ballots, so... And it really gives that mindset of voter integrity.
And it doesn't connect to the internet at all, so...
Correct. And you'll be able to see that we start those tabulators at zero, not at four hundred. So that's, that's just the, the big presence on it. The whole public accuracy testing is voter integrity and how secure the voting system really is.
When is that, Michelle?
That is July twenty-ninth at ten-thirty a.m.
Sarah.
Is that a date, like, across the board? Like, every jurisdiction has to do it on that day?
No. Just, you have to have it done three days before the election. So we just did the, what we call the preliminary testing. That's when we, we go ahead and we set the time, the date. We download all of the elections onto each tabulator with Dexter, Dexter Township has seven. We have two touchwriters, one for precinct one and precinct three, and one specifically for precinct two because they aren't in the same locations, and those tabulators are specifically for people that are hearing impaired or that need the extra support, braille, any type of handicap anyone may have. And then we have a tabulator for each one of our precincts, precinct one, two, three. We have two tabulators downstairs in our counting board, and we have one as backup, just to make sure that if something was to go down, we're fully prepared and equipped.
You know, I do want to say something, just a few things about taxes really quick, if that's okay. So just some things that I've noticed and things that I've gotten calls on. So I know usually we have a watermark. If you have an escrowed parcel or your home is escrowed, we usually have a watermark that says "copy." However, now it's in the message to the taxpayer at the top left. I've gotten a lot of calls about that because it looks different than in the past. Taxes are due, the summer taxes are due on September fourteenth, without interest. And if you have a change of address for any reason or you haven't received your tax bill, please contact me if you haven't received your tax bill and contact our assessor if you need to change your address. I do get a lot of calls from residents with address changes saying, okay, well, I'm not getting it to the address that I've requested, but that is through our assessing department, and that has to be done through Chris. I'm happy to, you know, write that down and pass it over to Chris, but it's probably more beneficial for it to go directly to him, either by emailing him at assessor@dexter township.org or calling him here, and he's here on Wednesdays. Thanks.
Sorry, you caught me rubbing my eye. Got like an eyelash in my eye. My quick announcement is actually, there were some papers at the back for folks up there or were on the desk. We're doing our second outdoor movie night here at Township Hall. I'm very excited about it. This is a fun event, bringing the family out. We will have, we are starting, and I noticed it was actually incorrect in the supervisor's report. I don't think it got updated. We're starting at seven P.M. instead of six this year because we do not have the public meeting happening before the movie. So rather than have three hours-ish before the movie starts, we're going to reduce that down to two. The fire department and the police will have some vehicles here for the kids to check out in sort of the touch-a-truck-type fashion, is what we're thinking. And then we're still working on the food truck, but there should be a food truck in the parking lot for folks to enjoy, to buy. The free stuff that the township sponsors is the free popcorn. And we're foregoing, after much mess and hassle last year for anyone who is here, the snow cones. So we will have just pre-made popsicles, which seem to be, everyone seemed to think would be a little easier. But very excited for that. And the movie this year is Troll, the new Trolls movie, Trolls Band Together. I guess I didn't say, for the people on the livestream, and I'll talk, I'll try to talk loud. August seventeenth at seven P.M. It's a Saturday.
Can you guys talk about the renewables? Even, I'm looking at, you know, what's, what's happening. I know what the update is, but can you guys...
So we had a community conversation, Laura and I, as liaisons to the Planning Commission and the Farm, Land, and Open Space Preservation Committee, helped facilitate that with the two chairs, Marty and Mark. And we had a great turnout, we had over thirty-five people. And we had an opportunity, after some learning, to have public participation as to the community priorities around renewable energy. Megan, it's too bad she's gone, but she's done a really nice report that she'll be presenting to the Planning Commission at the, I assume, at the next Planning Commission meeting next week. So the next step will be developing an ordinance aligned with what we heard in the community. Is that enough?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. I just, I wanted everybody to know that we're moving forward with the changes that we're...
And part of what, you know, this is all, as you said, it's time-sensitive. It's all because in November, they're, the state, if we do not have an ordinance in place, the state can usurp our local control and just work well. In theory, the developer has to come here, but they can, anyhow, it's just, we need to have something to, to show what we want to have it. And that was the general consensus of the people participating is that we do, there are some conditions that we would be able to put on a project that the state isn't formalized in their rulemaking process. So it would give us a little local control.
Laura, do you...
Oh, I have one other thing if I'm...
Go ahead.
I live on one of the lakes, Half Moon Lake, and the lakes are extraordinarily high right now. I, I know all the people that live on a lake would really appreciate it if you don't speed, if you're on the lake, because it's causing flooding. Some people are in their basements. I did talk with, we have a Half Moon Lake Association, and our association president called the dam operator and said he's draining it as fast as he can. But he, you know, we don't want to flood downstream, so for those of you that like to be on our lakes, if you could just be cognizant of the fact that it's at extraordinarily high level and it impacts our wildlife, or, you know, it impacts in a very significant way. So it's going to take a little, it's going to take a little bit of time for the water levels to go down, though. He said it's going to be at least a week like this, so... And if it keeps raining, it could never go away. No, I shouldn't say that, but anyhow.
Didn't say that.
I don't, I don't have anything significant to add.
Well, I would say that the Farm, Land, and Open Space Board applied for a pretty significant grant, at lea-, you know, like a multimillion-dollar grant, right?
Yeah, I can't report on that right now.
Okay.
But we didn't have a meeting this, this month, so.
Okay. Sarah?
Okay, so, um, I just want to let the board know that I, I came specifically to make, to answer any questions about the Airbnb enforcement, um, and your code enforcement in general. So I obviously can't address, once you close a meeting, I can't address all of you at the same time, but if any one of you have a particular question, um, I can answer them individually.
I, and just, just so everybody knows, you haven't seen Sarah in a while, I, I've, we've, we, we are trying to basically control the legal costs, and it hasn't felt like we had many matters on the agenda that really required legal advice, and so we are well below budget, if you noticed, on our, on our general government, um, legal fees. Um, we're using a lot of Sarah's time to talk about zoning enforcement, um, code enforcement matters right now. Um, but, um, but that's why you haven't seen her lately, but today I thought it was important for her to be here because she has a very active role with code enforcement.
Yeah, so, just so you all know, um, I do, I reach out to Karen before every meeting and say, you know, I see something on the agenda, or I don't see something on the agenda that you may or may not need me for. Tonight I saw that both of those two items, um, that, that there have been lots of questions to me about lately, about the code enforcement and the Airbnb enforcement, so I came tonight to answer those questions. If you, um, if you have any group questions, I can answer those now, um, but once the meeting closes, I can answer one-on-one after that.
Any questions for Sarah? Okay. Well, I have spoken enough this month, so, I have nothing to say, Janice, did you want to say anything? All right, then, that concludes our business, and we're adjourned.